Guys have cute little iPads down there.
I don't remember. We've been doing this for two years.
I don't think Steve's coming tonight.
Well, I'll start it and then just hand it over. Yeah. Alrighty, we ready to go?
Yes. Did you want to...
Alright, everyone, we will call the October 23 meeting of the Garden Grove City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Tewin.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaufenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kaywin.
Here.
Mayor Portembeard.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Alright, we'll start with the invocation from Maria Stipe, and then can I ask Councilmember Tuho when to lead us in the pledge?
Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight as we seek to understand and embrace the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs and to do what is best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
Everyone put your hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we will go over to the Housing Authority, so I'll let Stephanie take over.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could call roll please.
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Kaywin.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Vice Chair Tewin.
Here.
Chair Klaufenstein.
Here.
And Commissioner Solario is absent.
We start with oral communications. I have no pink cards, so we'll move on to consent items. 2A, receive and file the Housing Authority status report for September and receive and file minutes for the meeting held on September 25th. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
I'll call for the vote, please.
Motion received, eight yes votes.
Moving on to matters from Chair Commissioners and Director. Anyone have any comments this evening? Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn. The next meeting will be Tuesday, November 27th here at the Community Meeting Center.
Alright, so we will reconvene Garden Grove City Council, and we'll start out with oral communications. I do have a handful of cards, starting with Tom Raiber.
I was here last month, and everything went beautiful after that one, so I appreciate it. Today's a different situation. Today's for everybody in Garden Grove. The 980 work schedule, that needs to be corrected here. The city of Tessa, where I lived for 20 years, they also do and did the 980 work schedule that was voted back in April of 1993, and during that time, when people would go to City Hall, it was locked. So back in March of 2008, they went ahead and still kept the 980, but on Friday that everybody was off, they had an A and a B cycle. So therefore, City Hall was open five days a week. What does that do? That brings in more money to the city, permits. Contractors can have their jobs approved. Now, far as Garden Grove, you guys did it almost two years earlier. You guys did the 980 work schedule on July 15, 1991. Twenty-seven years, City Hall's been closed down on every other Friday. It's affected me, and it's probably affected a lot of other people out there. Everybody on the council has been voted by their peers in each of your districts, and far as the mayor, the city. So far as your people that are in your districts, don't you think that they should have City Hall opened five days a week? There's no more expense on the city for that? Just think about Motel 6. We will leave your light on for you, okay? Think about that. I've come here many times on Fridays. Why would I have to look in the internet on the website or call and you guys state that you guys are closed? Don't forget, election's coming up. Some people on this council here are up for reelection. All the best to all of you. Election for the Republicans is November 6, and the Democrats is November 8. Thanks a lot.
Counsel and staff, it may be a period on a thorn in your neck, but I guess what? I do my homework, and I'm well-respected in Congress and well-respected in California. And if you're going to have someone who cares about the community since 2013 in Orange County, registered by David Whiting without a bicycle, Mayor, then I obviously cared about the death rate then. And for me to be mischaracterized by your agency integrity when I'm out there writing a 34-page report, or two of them, to Congress with Luke Correa and Lortel on the trans station committee, and the big words, police officers, crosscars, paint, it's under the federal law of the FAST Act, you have that ability to write to your representatives. And when you listen to a candidate says, "We need to reach out to the cities to see what they need and help them," and that's what I did, okay? And I don't want, but just the fact that I'm trying to do my part, and I get this email about the homeless 40 percent, well, if you remember, I went to the person and gave them the information that next year there's federal funds to educate them occasionally. I gave them today is 625,000 men who are in prison will get some vocational education so they don't go back and re-citizen. All this could be done if you're aware of the situation. And I don't appreciate mischaracterizing my integrity for what I did way back when, and then it makes me feel that I am creating a disturbance for the agency, which is incorrect. So let that be the record. I have a cousin who's a US Marshal, retired, so I would say that I have the brother and sister. And I went in 2000 and made a legislation piece for peace officers and parents to have them put in training. I go that way in the record in 2000. So I don't need to be mischaracterized for someone who is misinterpreting what occurred. And I will not name names, but, and when I do call your traffic or your staff, it's a dodgeball. Now, if you want this master plan that I started five years ago with a no, and I started Westminster and look at the record, they're more flexible and work with you, is that you can't be ignored of everything, and I'm not either, but their staff have gotten familiar with Grover and Grotius, drove a truckload for 12 years, and then expect them to understand marketing concepts about inviting bicycle clubs in Orange County to get their input before you turn the first shovel, because I gave you the information of Brea where they had input, and they put bathrooms and restrooms, because they do ride, I told Mr. Styles, at least 40 miles a trip. And I think the Honorable Mayor knows that these are groups that ride in long ways. And if you're going to bring this concept to fruition, you've got to listen to them, and you need a commission of those organizations that will come in and train your youth how to ride a bike, and treat them with a license so they can be certified to help your kids in your community. This is an evolving AB 325, a pre-prenship program that you need to adapt and bring down on your Main Street with a bicycle repair shop and a hair salon, and start going vocational education, because your school board is going that direction. And you need to work with them on this issue. And they are depending on you, that you share that each district does their part to be sure the paint is fresh, because it does fade in the signs, in the wafer signs. And I would encourage you to get on YouTube with your students and your community and talk to them, and record your concerns, and interview people as a form of communication to your district of your school boards, that you're out there helping them. That's a good PR thing to do, and it's done in many different places. I hope this will open up a commission for bicycle and not have traffic emission every six months, because you're now committed to this project once you vote on it, and it can't sit on the side collecting dust. It costs money, maintenance, and there's a benefit to having this. There's dollars to come. I knew when I started this, before my time's up, I knew darn well, and Mayor, I knew darn well, when I started this master plan, it says in the document today that you're going to have an excuse to get more money for your community. That's why I started it, and I'm right. It's in here. You have a challenge with the issue with accidents, but if you adopt the resolutions as your own vision, vision serial, and also safer routes to school, and also a Tree City resolution to go to become that, you're going to make the value appropriate, and a lot more calmer environment than is what it is today. So I hope that you will not shun me, but work with me, and I've used it in a great ability to use it wisely, and to play phone tag, and what's been happening is immature. Thank you.
Tony Flores.
Good evening, Council staff on Tony Flores. Can I speak a little bit about Measure O? We've been getting a lot of flyers on Measure O. It's all Measure O out there. Not sure what these flyers are costing the citizens, but a lot of Measure O going on. We're not getting any rest from it. Now we're seeing them at the fire station houses, too. Measure O. The question on that is, of course, you've seen some of my emails, I think, some of you have seen them, maybe you just hit delete, and that's fine, but the information's on there. Talking about 2000 Measure H, 2002 Measure N, and 2012 Measure Y. The first two, 2000, excuse me, and 2000, and in 2002 Measure H and Measure N was to tax the tourists, that we're going to tax the tourists on that one. And then in Measure Y in 2012, because we needed more police, more fire, et cetera, but it was going to be spread out again on the tourists. Now Measure O is hitting all of us, tourist, citizens alike, Measure O, to pump up that public safety, but we don't really know if the numbers are coming in. It kind of reminds me of what Nancy Pelosi said, I may have said this last time, but got to pass and see what's in it. Doesn't make a lot of sense, and I don't think we need to be going that route. Two of you didn't vote to put it on the ballot, but you haven't come up with any alternative plan either, I believe Mr. Bowie and Mrs. Klaufenstein. What's the backup plan if this doesn't go through? We haven't seen that yet, we need to work on that. I've made a couple of proposals on it. A volunteer auxiliary police unit, digging into that fleet management fund, I know we're starting to spend money now, finally, on there, but use it as C money to move in, and of course, again, from what our chief is telling the public at these meetings, that we're going to have a problem with crime, start looking at the CCW aspect of it, to arm our citizens if we're really going in that area, especially if it doesn't pass. And there's some questions on it right now. A lot of folks that I talked to are having a hard look at that, and they can't believe what they're seeing again, in light of what we've passed out before with the previous 2000, 2002, and 2012 measures. And of course, people are asking, what happened to the money? The hotels are doing all this great things, all these great things, where's the benefit to the citizens? Been at it for about 30 years or so now. We haven't seen the benefit. Numbers have stayed stagnant as far as our police force. They haven't gone up at all. Don't know why that is, and we're not getting any information from our council or our staff to let us know why we're going that direction, or why it's remained that way. If there's an issue with the monies, tell the people. Tell us, just like we're looking at the pensions that are out there. Is this going to help fund the pensions, Measure O? Or is it really going to put more police on the street? Nobody seems to have the guarantee on that, even though we have this Oversight Committee that's going to be part of this program. There's no guarantee on that either, because that's merely an advisory committee, and that goes back to the council, the council, the ones that actually handle the money and make the decisions on that. And so far, it looks like our decisions haven't been good ones, or we wouldn't be talking about Measure O. Finally, on Saturday, we have, on West Garden Grove, we're going to have a meet the candidates forum over at West Grove Park at 10 o'clock to 12. Mayor as well. I know you'll be busy that day with family matters, and we're sorry to hear about your loss. But any case, you folks are invited to come out, too. Just because of District 1 doesn't mean you're restricted, because there will be some unique questions that deal with District 1 only. We have a lot of things that are going on out there, and of course, other things that are going on in the west of, all of Garden Grove, so if you have time, come on out. Thank you.
City Council, thank you. This is not necessarily you guys' problem, but it's our school district, and the marching band is not being allowed to practice out on the field that night, which means that in their competition season, these kids are actually, were crying today in their room, in the band room. Apparently, they're being told that they have to pay $3,000 per shift overtime to the maintenance crew for the district to come out and watch the kids carry their equipment out onto the field. And it's just ridiculous. I know they just did a full remodel over there, and it's like building a playground or giving a toy to a child and then telling the child they have to buy a maintenance plan for it so they can use their toy. It's frustrating. And I am the band booster president on the board over there, and so that's why I'm here now, is because I care very deeply about the whole program. And so my request to you guys and anybody listening in the audience is, please contact the superintendent of the district, and I'll be contacting them tomorrow as well. So I'm just taking every action I can, because the marching program is going to be coming to an end in November. So we're in a very limited amount of time to make any difference to these kids for the rest of the year. Anything else you want me to add? Linda?
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, I'm a bicycle.
Come on up. It's fine.
So we just found out today, so that's why we're here, and we're, I was like, you guys have a meeting tonight, we've got to be here. These kids practice all summer, and we fundraised like thousands of dollars just for them to get coaches. And now they're, like, they have to practice on a second field where there's no lighting. That's where they want the kids to go tomorrow and the next day. So I'm kind of concerned, because there's like safety issues on the other field, there's no lighting. And you're telling these kids, okay, you can't practice on Monsor, Michael Monsor Field, you can't, because you're going to ruin our field. I think it's unfair for them, and that's why we're here, because we don't have time to find another spot for them to practice. So that's pretty much it, right?
Yeah, and the football team plays out there and practices every single night.
Yeah, they have to wait for the football players to leave before they can get on the field.
Yeah.
So which is 6 to 9, and then after 9 o'clock, they go home, they do their homework, probably till midnight or 1 or 2. So yeah, they work really hard. I think that's it, right?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Berla Lambert.
I'm here to talk about Measure O. I'm a resident of Garden Grove for 61 years, same home, fully invested. Just wanted to stop in and let you know why I'm not, why I am voting no on the 1 percent tax. All of this talk about needing it for police and fire infrastructure are the same words that we heard in 2000. It worked then, and now you want to try it again 18 years later? We were told in 2000 that the bed tax from the Crown would take care of the Police Department and Fire Department and other services. For some reason, we had to refinance the Alkalanti Hotel, raising the bed tax would take care of the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the other services. Along came Embassy Suites. Yeah, more bed tax. But they had to add on, they needed more room. Wow, guess what? The Great Wolf Cave and the water park. More bed tax for the Police Department and the Fire Department and all the other services. All of these hotels are within walking distance of my home. I should put up my own sign, huh? No one listened back then. I remember Bob Denson, self-proclaimed street dog Bob Owens, and then Ray Latrell, and more recently, our wild man Bob. Steve was groomed for his job very well, very well. His words sound just like the mirror we just had. You need to change your wording a little bit. The bed tax should have, we should have the best-paid Police Department and Fire Department and the best-looking streets in the county. So I would like to see an audit to where all this bed tax goes. And why should the residents keep on paying these taxes? We have no accountability. We don't know where it went. I've been here, I don't know where these taxes went. I also, we wanted to show us where the money went and to whom, and then ask the residents what they would like to do. I also love Garden Grove, and I need to live here in comfort. And I thank you very much for these few minutes of listening to me.
Thank you, Berla. Alright, that is all the cards I have, so we will recess to successor agency now.
I think there was one more person.
Well, Byron? But did you want to go now, or did you want to go under the bike item? You're welcome to go either one. Okay, well, we'll hang tight until we get to them. Yeah. Okay, so we'll go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Certainly.
Member Beard.
Here.
Member O'Neill.
Here.
Member Tewin.
Here.
Member Klaufenstein.
Here.
Member Kaywin.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yeah.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with the City Council. We have two consent items, receive and file the minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, matters from agency members. Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district, and I'll let Chris Beard take over.
Yeah, could I ask to call and roll, please?
Member Bowie.
Yeah.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Klaufenstein.
Here.
Member Kaywin.
Here.
Member Tewin.
Here.
Vice President O'Neill.
Here.
And President Beard.
Here. So we've already covered oral communication consent items. We have one matter, which is the receive and file the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from any of the board members? General Manager, seeing none, we're adjourned back to the council meeting.
Okay, we will now move on to consent items. It's recommended that items 2A through 2K be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
I'd like to pull 2B.
Shoot. I was going to pull 2B or not 2B.
I have a scarecrow. Right on.
I don't get it.
Okay, well, okay, we'll pull it and we'll talk then.
2B is approval of a 10-year...
One second. Can I get a motion on the balance?
Yeah. Move. Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Take it away.
Okay, 2B is approval of a 10-year agreement with One More Productions to manage the operation of the Gem Theater. Can we have a staff report on that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Before you, we request that City Council approve a 10-year agreement with the city and One More Production for the exclusive use of the Gem Theater. On April 23, 2008, the city and One More Production entered into a 10-year agreement for One More Production to be the sole operator of the Gem Theater. In exchange for providing 150,000 in capital upgrades, One More Production operated the Gem Theater rent-free for the term of the 10 years. During this term, One More Production brought nearly 50 theatrical productions and expanded the artistic reach into the community with award-winning musicals. Through its productions and general support of local nonprofits and businesses, One More Productions has added artistic value to the downtown Civic Center area and helped to revitalize historic Main Street. The Gem Theater is the city's facility operated by the current resident, One More Production, attaches a renewal agreement for One More Production to continue to manage the operations of the Gem Theater through October 31, 2028. Four more significant aspects of this agreement include provisions related to the terms, the term is a 10-year period. In exchange for providing capital improvements to an estimate cost of $400,000, One More Production shall exclusively use the Gem Theater during the term of the agreement. One More Production shall be required to produce at least five full theatrical productions with a minimum of 24 weeks of performances annually, and in addition to full theatrical productions, One More Productions shall be required to include at least 15 other performances annually. One More Productions must provide the city with all insurance requirements. The proposed agreement has been signed by One More Production and approved by our city attorney. Included in this agreement is the requirement that One More Production will provide funding and complete capital improvements to the Gem Theater in the estimated cost of $400,000, and will provide all interior custodial maintenance. The city will be responsible for payment of monthly utilities not to exceed $20,000 per year, exterior building maintenance, and major building repairs. These costs were part of the previous agreement with One More Production and are contained within the current city's budget. It is recommended that City Council approve the agreement with the city and One More Production for exclusive use of the Gem Theater, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, including any minor modifications as appropriate, therefore, on behalf of the city. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
It's not so much a question as it is just a couple of comments. I was fortunate enough to see the producers on Saturday evening, and I have to say, it was fantastic, jaw-dropping. Damien, you were fabulous. And it was wonderful to talk to people that were there to see the play and learn where they were from and different areas that had never been to Garden Grove before. Huntington Beach to Los Angeles, all over Orange County, it was wonderful to see so many people, not only enjoying the Gem Theater and the production, but just our city in general. And so I want to congratulate One More Productions on another 10 years, and I want to thank them for their contributions to the community and to the arts. And with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Can I make a comment, too?
Please, go ahead.
I saw the same show the week prior. Excellent performance, my reaction response is wow.
Yeah.
It's a professional production, very entertaining. I encourage people to go out there, have a night, dinner down the street, walk over to the theater and have a wonderful time. Tell all your friends. If you don't have a good time, don't tell anybody. Is that how that comment went?
[laughter]
But really, people, get out there and see this high caliber, well-done productions. They're great, they're very entertaining. They're very entertaining.
Thanks, Damien. Glad to see we've got another 10 years to look forward to. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to say a few words? Please come up. He gave us a card and I overlooked it for oral, so this is his time to shine.
So 10 and a half years ago today, I guess, we stood in front of you and came to you with an idea. And by you supporting and allowing us to be part of this, we've changed lives, both artisans throughout our county that are now out in the world doing things from Broadway to off-Broadway, national tours, they're doing cruise ships, they're doing every major music park across the globe. But more importantly, this year alone, we've had 186 performances so far. We've sold out 172 of them, so that's 158 people a night that are coming to downtown Garden Grove. There are people, the most important thing I tell our actors is that we are in service. We allow people to escape for the three hours that they're with us. They're coming from Fullerton, they're coming from Orange County, they're coming from LA, they're coming as far out as Riverside County. We have people coming from San Diego on a regular basis. They're coming into our community, they're being part of our community. But most importantly, we were nationally recognized for the past three years by winning several BroadwayWorld.com awards last year. And together, we've created a home for the arts. So many cities have lost their theaters since we opened ours 10 years ago. 23 theaters in different cities have shut their doors. I cannot begin to thank you for the opportunity that you've given us and you've given the city and our residents. We are so grateful, and we will continue to be in honor of what it is that we create and serve, and we are just so honored to be part of our community. Thank you so much for that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Damien. Okay, everybody good to keep going? Okay, we'll move on to public hearings, item 3A.
Item 3A is adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment number GPA 003, 2018, to adopt a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, Garden Grove Active Streets master plan into the city's general plan circulation element. And Mr. Moreno is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. First of all, I'd like to apologize that I'm not Erin Webb giving this presentation because this was her baby, but she is here in the audience.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
So with that, the item before you tonight is to transmit a planning commission recommendation to City Council for the approval of a general plan amendment to adopt a bicycle pedestrian master plan known as the Garden Grove Active Streets Plan into the circulation element of the general plan. There are several parts to this proposed amendment. The first is that there are goals, policies, and implementations that will be added to the circulation element. The master plan of bikeway facility exhibit will be amended. The master plan of arterial highways designation map and the master plan of streets and highways maps will be amended within the general plan. The entire active streets master plan will be added as an appendix to the general plan. And the Orange County Transportation Authority master plan of arterial highways has been amended by the OCTA Board to make the changes to our exhibits in the circulation element, which is a very important aspect of this. The idea of the bike master plan came out of the Reimagine campaign. City staff started with an in-house charrette's imagining how downtown Garden Grove could be a great place to visit. When we looked at new ways to engage our community through the online forum MindMixer, we asked all kinds of questions of the community on the forum and got back 804 ideas. For us, this is kind of amazing because when we've done public outreach in the past, doing mailouts, we'd be lucky to get 80 people to actually show up at a meeting, so this was pretty incredible for us. Some of the ideas included a bike trail on the PE rideaway as well as the open streets Prompted by Mayor Jones, planning staff applied for a SCAG grant, which was dubbed reimagine pedals and feet proposal. The proposal was for the creation of the city's first bicycle and pedestrian master plan and to hold an open streets event. To our amazement, Garden Grove was awarded the grant in October of 2013, but the funding didn't appear until 2015. Prior to our first open streets event in October 2014, city staff on the reimagine committee were joining in and riding in open streets events in San Diego and Los Angeles. The committee was made up of staff from community and economic development, community services, Public Works, police, and fire. The city hired Aaron Paley, whose company, Community Arts Resources, had been very successful at putting on the Cyclovia events in Los Angeles. As part of the event, Public Works staff constructed a pilot segment of the PE rideaway trail between Nelson and Stamford Streets. Excuse me. Community engagement has been a hallmark of the reimagine campaign, where the online forum generated much more participation. The planners hosted a reimagine design center at the first open streets and asked people what they thought about the event, about a trail on the PE rideaway, and about all the other ideas that came out of MindMixer. They seemed to like everything that came out of that. For the second open streets event, the city along with SCAG hired Alta Planning and Building to create a bicycle pedestrian master plan, as well as hired Aaron Paley to produce the event. The decision was made to bring community engagement out to the events, so Alta hosted a fun, interactive planning workshop on Main Street. In addition to this, the city also had other community engagements, which included three advisory committee meetings that were held. The committee members included local residents, the Garden Grove PTA, high school students, a Cal Poly Pomona graduate who worked on an earlier downtown plan, city staff, a UCI professor, and a planning commissioner. Public were invited to suggest improvements for the bicycle network by using online interactive mapping tools. 220 suggestions were mapped and 37 gaps or barriers were identified. The draft document was also presented at a workshop at the 60th anniversary celebration in Village Green Park. Over 230 people participated and gave feedback. In the middle of writing the Active Streets Plan, that is before you tonight for your consideration, the opportunity came up to submit for an OCTA Bicycle Corridor Improvement Program grant. The city received a grant award to improve the onsite, sorry, on-street bicycle infrastructure. All the BCIP grant improvements are proposed within the existing public rideaway within the width of the existing streets on Burkhurst, Chapman, Lamson, and West. The third open streets event in April in 2017 created pop-up bike lanes on West Street as part of the bike route. SCAG and the project team had informational booths with a passport program that had participants provide feedback on the bikeways. 91% of the 174 respondents supported the separated bike lanes on West Street. In regard to the Active Streets Master Plan, the plan implements goals from several elements in the general plan that was approved in 2008. Those elements include the circulation element, air quality, and the parks, recreation, and open space element. The master plan provides a level of analysis and concentrated effort on improving active transportation that is new for Garden Grove. The plan includes careful study of the local factors influencing bike and walking in Garden Grove and setting priorities for the future. The Alta team reviewed existing conditions, conducted bicycle and pedestrian counts at nine locations across the city, and analyzed bicycle and pedestrian collision data. Data showed there was a need to improve safety. Between 2009 and 2014, there were 754 collisions reported that involved bicyclists and pedestrians, and of those, there were 25 fatalities. During the bicycle count, it was noted that 95% of all bicyclists riding in the city were riding on sidewalks, and approximately 40% of the bicycles rode on the, bicyclists rode on the sidewalk in locations where bike lanes were present. So based on the data, a proposed bike facilities network was proposed, and that's the map that is before you tonight. These also included reclassification of West Street and Gilbert Street, which is on this map and with the little bubble, bubbles around the areas denoting both Gilbert and the portion of Gilbert Street and West Street. These include reclassification, these reclassifications west in the portion of Gilbert north of Chapman Avenue, call for changing the streets from secondary undivided four-lane streets to divided collector three-lane streets. The restriping of Gilbert Street between Chapman Avenue and Cantella Avenue with a buffered bike lane facility will connect to the north bike lane improvements constructed by the county. Orange County Public Works supports the project and agreed that the project will improve vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. The general plan designates West Street in the master plan of arterial highways as a four-lane undivided street with a capacity of 25,000 average daily trips. In the 2008 city's general plan, when that was approved, the volumes ranged from 13,000 to 15,000 average daily trips. Since that time, the volumes decreased from between 11,000 to 13,000 average daily trips. OCTA reviewed the data for the reclassification of both West and Gilbert Streets and concluded that the MPAH amendments are appropriate. Future volumes for traffic are forecasted below 15,000 average daily trips for both streets. The amendment to the MPAH was approved by OCTA Board of Directors. Finally, by adopting the master plan goals into the circulation element, decision-makers will be providing specific policy recommendations to make Garden Grove a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly community. The goals aim to increase the use of active transportation, direct the way public improvements are made where resources are allocated, provide specific recommendations for the city to implement. Lastly, I think what we would like to do is thank members of the community who participated in the outreach events and helped shape the plan. We'd also like to thank the community advisory community, as well as Erin Webb and Diiewu and Alta Planning and Design for all their hard work in bringing this plan forward. And then, as a side note, and this is kind of, this is great, I think, the city of Garden Grove did get an award of merit from the sustainability program back in, back, in 2018. So that's really good, yeah. So with that, staff would conclude that ask the city council to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment number GP 003, 2018. Also, Ryan, a representative here from Alta Planning and Design, to give support on any technical active transportation questions you may have. And that would conclude staff's report. Sorry it was so long.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, we do have, we do have several cards. Craig Durfee.
Yes, council and staff and Erin Webb, thank you, Erin. You were part of the team. I came to, you listened, and we had a street open event, Cyclovia, and it was competing with Michelle Martinez's SCAG, and there was a little tug-of-war. But I brought my research, and you decided what you wanted to do. And in 2013, I came to you, former, as not a mayor, and the Honorable Chris Beard, and asked you, would you take the vote and move forward? And we did. I don't see any of my name on this. I would like to be, as a founder, considered as an honor for my hard work, and I'm not asking for any money. I'm asking for something for their community. I knew that our kids could benefit from this if we moved forward, and the city manager, Mr. Stiles, was against it. I stood there like a soldier. I took it the run, and we moved forward, and what you got today is you have a document. You can go and ask for money to make your community a brighter place. There's no question about it. So I asked, when I wrote to you, I asked Lee, the planner, for that consideration. Never got a call back, but I think at least a thank you on the document would be cool. That's all I'm asking for that. The other thing I have concern is that this is the starting point. I think we need a youth commission. It's been done across California. It's done in Anaheim, it's done in Hind Beach, I think La Habra. And this youth commission could be a vehicle for your master plan and also for the school, and that collaboration could build the youth and their advisement to you would build your master plan in a way that they get college credit at AB 325. And I think you need to build on that because now you're growing into an industry of things you need to have a youth who can look into and research and advise you, so you're building the right product for your economic needs. I encourage you to do that because it's been, it's a state California youth commission, and they're all over California. And I think it's a wise choice to make in this. Now, when you go out here, when you leave to go home, in your parking spot for five years, do you see a bicycle rack? No. You're not seeing the picture. I caught you. And I waited five years. It's my turn to speak. I'm asking you, who's going to say, with your coordinator in this document, where are you going to get the money to hire coordinator? Now, Erin Webb worked her hardest to get this, and she deserves retirement. Who's going to replace them? So we continue to get the dollars and the call for projects. The other thing is, it's about the safety. I'd ask this council to take the next move and assure the school board that you're there for them, because that's what they're waiting. I went to the board meeting, and I just put the board member said. Listen to the recording. So you do your part, and then we move to get our kids a brighter education and less congestion as part of the federal law called CMAQ, congestion air quality. And on the FAST Act, it is where the congestion, where it's your safe routes of school. And if you're going to, in your general plan, I would encourage you to come up with Vision Zero, safe route to school. You have the packet and your trees. You become a resolution calling for a gauge into the world of being a tree, see, you say, I was one of the cities, I had to follow certain protocols, per Pat Mattson. And that was the goal. If you do these things, and you did it with your document, it says it is, you're serious, and then you have resolutions calling on to your federal colleagues, Lohrenthal and others, you're going to be heard much louder than me. And that is just going with a fishing pole and a nice bait and going to the water and see what you get, because it ain't going to cost you to die. And I listened to elected official, trying to be elected, and he said, we need to get into the community and call them up and see what the mayor, what the city manager, the police chief wants. It makes sense. You have that ability. Are you using it? That's your question to answer yourselves. And I encourage you. The other concern I have is your marketing concept. Do you have a marketing of youth or college people like Huntington Beach? I told Mr. Stiles, if you look at their personnel, they're hiring people 11, 12 bucks an hour to get their college education, why don't you start bringing some youth in with marketing background and make suggestions so you can build on that concept that you have bike riders that are going 25, 30 miles or 50, and they need a restroom. Like I mentioned, suggestion of Brea. I mean, it's a no-brainer. They go for the 57 all the way across to, and Brea, and need drinking fountain. If that's the one that you're going to attract, says their homeowner just ride five miles, then they're going to spend money, okay? And that, you need to bring some college youth in here who have marketing background and experience and get them to bring, with a youth commission, a flavor that you don't have in your staff. The other concern is a Stanton. Now, you have a portion of Dale, you have, this is serious, you have a portion of Dale that goes into Beach blocked. You have a Stanton. You have a portion of Lamson and Beach towards Sam's Club that's Stanton. Are you reaching out to them so you can make it a complete circle? I think we need to put this on the agenda again or have a traffic commission, youth commission that will guide you, and they meet you infrequently. If this is a living document, you're going to have to work hard like I did to come five years later and get the funds you need. That's what you're going to do, this body of government. You can't leave it sit now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Byron Von Corp. How you all doing?
Good.
Byron Von Corp, I own Papa Weely Bicycles with my wife. She pretty much runs the place. I work for her. We've been part of the open streets event since day one, and thank you very much for choosing us. We really like being there, and we really like, we live, I live in Long Beach, and we've done the Cyclovia, we've seen the open streets there before, and what you guys are doing is fantastic. We really appreciate it. We are in West Garden Grove. We're a little bit off of what most of your plans are. After the last Cyclovia, we spoke with Erin Webb and Jennifer about what we can do in our area for getting kids to school a little better, a little safer. Springdale, in between Chapman and Lamson, there's no bike lanes, and there's five schools there. No kids can ride their bikes to school because it's a superhighway essentially. So I went through where we live in Long Beach, did a bunch of measurements, and a bike lane can go on east side without really having to impact any of the current lanes. You could do the four-foot bike lane, which is, you know, legal, and then the three-foot offset, and if you put box dots, then it's a physical barrier, do the big ones, and it's really inexpensive, and the only thing you would have to do is choke it down. And it's really inexpensive, and the only thing you would have to do is choke it down at the stoplights and going up Soap Buck to Derby Hill. Everyone who lives over there knows that. Exactly. So that's kind of where, I mean, we, it would, it's a cheap thing to do, and it would be get kids to school because we own a bike shop there, yeah, self-serving a little bit. But also, it's, kids don't ride their bikes to school there, just way too unsafe, and it would just make it a lot easier. And if y'all need anything for that, I mean, Erin's asked, and we'll do anything for y'all and to make sure that we can help them out. Open Streets will do whatever you need for that as well. So we're just another tool, hopefully, for you guys. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Byron. You're not just another tool. Brenda Miller.
I have not had the pleasure of meeting most of you, but I'm Brenda Miller. I grew up here. Even though I no longer live here, I live in San Clemente, where I've become a pretty well-known advocate for bicycle and pedestrian planning and infrastructure. So I would like to say, first off, I was so honored when Erin asked me to be part of the city's advisory committee, to be able to give back to the place that you grew up and which frankly taught me how to ride my bike properly, because it's so dangerous. You either did that or you died. So I learned that very young, and it still is with me today. So going forward, the more friendly you can make your streets, the more friendly you can make your city. And that's really important. This plan really isn't so much about the projects or the stripes on the road. It's about the vision. And we can all recognize that the city of Garden Grove don't have, doesn't have many gardens in it anymore. And this is a way of putting the garden back in our town. And I still consider this place my town. I love this place. It's home. I still have the smell of strawberries forever implanted in my brain. It's never going to leave. So I'd like to ask that you do go ahead and approve this. And I'm definitely an advocate for the city from afar. I write grant letters of support for you whenever you apply, whenever I'm asked to participate. It's about the vision. There will be challenges going forward, but something that I've really learned as an advocate is, first and foremost, there's one four-letter word that is the worst word in the English language that we can say in public, and it's the word can't. So anytime anybody tells you, you can't, think creatively, think outside the box, and think about the prepositions. What can we do to get over, around, through, or under whatever obstacles are put before us? If you think in that, in those terms, the goal will always be realized. So let's go forward. This is awesome. I'm so excited for the city. It's been a long time. Erin, she was just like a nuclear power plant in a good sort of way. She just never ran out of juice. And it's just such an honor again, so let's go forward again. This is just a wonderful moment for our city. And anytime anybody needs any help in this town, you can always find me, call me. I don't do a good job of hiding. OCTA knows where I am at all times. This is the county, and anytime you need a letter of support, you need some public outreach, I'd be happy to come down, help out. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Brenda. Anybody else? Erin? Paul?
Come on.
Come on, Erin.
You don't, you don't gotta, but...
Come on, Erin.
But kinda.
This is a good thing.
Wait, can you go sit over there just to make it a little more comfortable?
This is a good thing, but already we've implemented a lot, so it's not like we're behind the times. We do have safe routes to school coming with six schools. We have the Bike Safe Program that's going to be super cool if we can get that one to work with the bike trailer, where we're going to go out into neighborhoods and teach kids how to bike properly. So there are lots of things coming, and many of the goals we're already working towards from the plan, so we're ahead of the game. All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Erin, for being here.
Please approve it.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, anybody else? CNN, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues, comments? I'd like to say a few words and just say, it's funny, because we always have so many things going on here in the city, and everything feels like it moves frustratingly slow, and that's always the challenge. But you get to certain stopping points where you just stop and take a breath and reflect on what you've done. And when you listen to your report, Lee, Erin, you got to be pretty impressed with what we've accomplished in a relatively short period of time. I mean, you know, five, six years in the work since, going back to the onset of Reimagine and the first Open Streets events and a lot of grant opportunities and just all we've learned and all we've soaked up and just how we've positioned ourselves. So I think we've got a bright future ahead of us. We just got to keep plowing forward. Like Brenda says, we can't let obstacles get in our way. We've got to keep finding creative ways to keep things moving forward. But together, we're connecting the city, making it more bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, safer for the children and for everyone. So it's a wonderful thing to get to this point and have this going forward. Anybody else?
Just, you know, I'd like to recognize Mr. Craig Durfee. You know, he's been a staunch advocate of this program since the onslaught of it, and he is very thorough in his investigation and digging in and sending us a lot of detail and a lot of good information. And it doesn't go unnoticed, Craig. We appreciate that, okay? And you're good at doing that. So I just want to recognize you and tell you that...
I appreciate that, and it could be on the document to be approved.
Okay, all right. And I want to thank Erin and everybody that's done so much work in it, you know. Sometimes we get the glory, we get to go to the events and the schools and interact, you know, but we get to walk in and it's, everything's done for us. But to see those, the kids, you know, riding their bikes or walking, you know, it's kind of neat, you know, that they'd be able to do that. I was able to do that as a child here in Garden Grove, riding my bike three miles to school in seventh grade, you know, without worrying, my parents didn't have to worry about me getting run over. But, you know, and then high school, I probably put, oh, thousands and thousands of miles on my bike between seventh grade and being able to drive at 16 in my, I was a young, started school young, so I was riding my bike a lot from high school and then to work by Disneyland every day of the week. So I got really good at riding a bike, so I should open a bike shop. But enough said. Anyway, great, it's a great thing to move forward. And like you, like everybody said, you know, it's a work in progress. It's going to be a continual work in progress.
I would like to move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, we still got to keep going? Everybody? Okay. All right, we'll move on to item for, items for consideration, 4A.
Item 4A is an adoption of a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Orange County Transportation Authority for the construction phase of the Euclid-Westminster Intersection Improvement Project. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to submit a comprehensive transportation funding program grant application to the Orange County Transportation Authority. The grant is for the construction of improvements to the intersection of Euclid and Westminster Avenue. The project will add a southbound right turn lane on Euclid and an eastbound right turn lane on Westminster. The project is estimated to cost almost $1.1 million, and the city's share will be about $275,000. That's about a 25% minimum, which is required by the grant. We will be using gas tax funds for that amount. Staff recommends adopting the resolution and authorizing the grant submittal. This concludes staff's report. I'm available, should you have any questions?
Any questions of staff? All right, motion?
Second.
Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes. 4B is approval of a cooperative agreement with the Orange County Transportation Authority for the Garden Grove Boulevard Corridor Traffic Signal Synchronization Project.
I'm here for that one as well. Thank Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to enter into this cooperative agreement with the OCTA for the Garden Grove Boulevard Traffic Synchronization Project. The 8.6-mile project will begin at Valley View Street and end at Bristol Street in Santa Ana. The project is estimated to cost just over $2.6 million and will require a local match from Garden Grove of just over $450,000. The project will develop and implement signal timing, upgrade traffic signal equipment, signal communication upgrades will also be done, and it will provide two years of maintenance of that system. If approved tonight, the project can begin next March, that's in 2019, and should be complete before the end of 2019. Staff recommends approval and execution of the attached agreement. And this concludes staff's report, and I'm available, should you have any questions?
Any questions? Motion? And I'll make, move it?
Second.
Called a vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
4C.
4C is award a contract to JIG consultants to provide construction management and inspection services for the West Haven Reservoirs Rehabilitation Project and the Magnolia Reservoir and Booster Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to award a contract to provide construction management and inspection service for the rehabilitation of West Haven Reservoirs and the Magnolia Reservoir and the Booster Pump Station at that site. These projects are scheduled to begin next January. The selection of outside consultant will provide additional expertise needed for these projects and allows staff to concentrate on the design of future projects. Staff received proposals from two qualified firms and rated the firms with respect to their experience and specific services offered. JIG consultants was determined to be the most qualified firm and offered the highest services rated by the city. Staff then negotiated a contract fee of just over half million dollars. The consultant will be paid using water funds. No general funds will be used. Staff is recommending that a professional service contract be awarded tonight and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available, should you have any questions?
Just a quick comment. These seem like important infrastructure projects. I'm glad to see this moving forward. So with that, if anybody has any other questions, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Called a vote?
Okay. Motion received, seven yes votes.
4D.
4D is authorize the issuance of purchase orders to All American Asphalt, Vulcan Materials, and RJ Noble for asphalt products on an as-needed basis. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight's city council is being asked to authorize these purchase orders to All American Asphalt, Vulcan Materials, and RJ Noble in the amount of $600,000 per year for the next five years. The city has existing purchase orders to the same vendors for the same amounts and timeframe. However, the authorization of those purchase orders will expire at the end of this month. The purpose of the purchase orders are to secure asphalt as needed through the year, and it's typically used for patching and paving projects. The three vendors are the only vendors located near the city that can deliver asphalt at the required temperatures for quality paving. Staff obtains quotes from each of the vendors for each project and then selects the lowest bidder. Funding is within the Public Works Department budget and is mostly paid for using gas tax. Staff recommends authorization of the purchase orders for the vendors to be extended for the next five years as funding permits. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available, should you have any questions?
Questions? No? Moved and approved?
Second.
Called a vote?
It's kind of funky. This came, this popped up kind of weird. Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that takes us on to matters. And we do have one agenda's matter, which is 5A, and it is the 2018 Economic Development Strategic Plan.
5A is to transmit the 2018 Economic Development Strategic Plan, EDSP, at the request of the city council. And Ms. Kim is here to give the report.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I'm pleased to bring forward our 2018 Economic Development Strategic Plan. This was an action item from the city council priorities from the 20, for the fiscal year 1819. We had engaged the consultant of Kimberly Horn, and this evening, we have prepared a brief PowerPoint for your, to walk through the milestones in bringing us to this point in the preparation of the 2018 Economic Development Strategic Plan. At this point, I would like to bring Mr. Dave Barkwess forward, and he will be walking us through the PowerPoint presentation, and both Dave and staff is available to answer any additional questions the council may have following the end of the presentation. So I'll have...
You got that one. Well, thank you very much for having us here tonight. This is a brief presentation to introduce the Economic Development Strategic Plan. There was a lot of work that went into this process. I should be very proud of, and very proud of your staff and the community members who were involved. What that is, the plan is all about, it's all about the community, and it's about helping the community, your business community, and everything about Garden Grove, so you should be very proud of that. As far as the Economic Development Strategic Plan, really what that plan is, is the idea of the plan is the policy and program, which is to strengthen and sustain the city's economic base. So if you think of it as a policy program that's direction-setting, to say, this is what we want to be, this is how we're going to do it, and this is the time we take to do that. And then with the addition of this program, it has an actual strategy that says who's involved in that implementation, which that's an important aspect of this plan. It gets the staff level involved to say, here's those departments that are involved in the implementation of the strategic elements of this plan, so you can see that progress and happen. Not just, speaking of progress, if we go to the next slide, economic development in the community just didn't stop in early 2017 when you said, we need to update this plan. There's a lot of work that went on during that process. So as you can see on the screen, there's a number of internal processes you were involved in with some of the discussions with you individually, as a group, with the community. A number of you were involved in the community meetings, staff level involvement within different businesses. So there were very widespread wings that went out to the community to talk about economic development. Well, in that process as well, the next click, you can see there's a lot of internal dynamic that was happening for improvement of the, of that, of that engine of economic development, things such as the ADU ordinance, a number of other things that have happened that are contributing to the betterment of economic development in the community. So think about it as customer service, it's really representation of what that is. And while all that was happening, you have a number of different projects that are actually being built or entitled. So that, that action or that verb of economic development is something that's happening today and has been happening. I can tell you from an outsider coming in that the progress and the things that you and the staff have been involved have pretty, been pretty profound as far as I've seen, and that trend is going to continue, I believe, just based on the analysis that we've done. When you look at the community, is who do we serve? And that's the real question. You say, in any strategy, just like your general plan, just like your last topical item on your public hearing about the bike master plan and pedestrian master plan, was who is that, who are you serving in that community? And that's your residents, 175,000-plus residents that you have here, but you also have your workforce population. That's just not the people that live and work here, but that's people that come into your community on a day-to-day basis. And those numbers are pretty staggering there, and they're growing every day. In addition to that, you have your business owners, those folks that own business who may live here or work here and come here, and you saw a couple in the audience who said that this evening. And so those folks, those hundreds of businesses that are in your community and grow every day, is you want to... that are in your community and grow every day, is you want to make sure that that strategy and that plan seeks to help them through that process of economic development. But you help them, they help you in the process of growing your economy. The strategic plan, there are six basic goals to that. I won't go into the details, but we're going to pick out a few just for, for entertainment purposes. But those basic goals are the overarching principles or the direction-setting goals and the six, six powerful statements of, of who you are as far as economic development, such as enhancing job opportunities. And each one of those, if we go on to the next slide, is one example of the goal one. You'll see on the screen, you'll see it has a goal, then a strategic action and implementation. What's important about that is we can have a direction, the goal is a stated end, what we want to be. Then we have these strategies to say, how do we get there? And then there's these specific actions as part of that to say, here are the specific things that we will do in order to attain that goal. What's great about this is it goes across those six goals. If you go to the next slide, some are more important than others, one might argue, but they're all equally contributing to that economic development and that sustained growth within your community. This one, goal two, you see here, is a good example with dissolution of redevelopment in recent years. You know that economic development as the, as that tool has become a challenge, and so funding and financing issues is related to that. So the community has to get creative in what that means, and how do we leverage those sources of income, not just at the state, federal level, but how do we put those and weave those together in the most effective way to help folks such as your hotel and other builders that contribute to your economy in a large way, is how do we stitch all those together to be most helpful for those who want to invest, and we want to invest in them in the community. And finally, there's one or two more goals, goal four that you have here. Obviously, one of your most successful things that happened is within the Grove District, the Anaheim Resort, what, 10-plus projects, hotel projects recently that have shown success, and that trend is continuing. One of the things of that promotion of tourism and other things related to tourism along that resort district area is a really powerful engine of, of growth and change in your community, and you parlay that in other things. It's not just a hotel and TOT and tax, it's how that builds upon that and contributes to local things such as other retail businesses, for example. So there's many other subcomponents to that that are involved. And one thing that you should be proud of and as a community is goal five, which is that community-based engagement. You have a profound example, I guess you could say, in the, in the county of, of really taking heart, community engagement into your planning processes. And I think it showed in all of the things you've talked about earlier today, but really the thing is to continue the, continue tradition of that involvement within this process. Again, it's you're serving that community, is how can we best engage with them so they can help us through what they need, how they can best perform, and how we can be an ombudsman or a liaison to that community through that. And there's a bit, ability for you to, to parlay a lot of what you have, such re-imagine. It's not just status about overall economic development, so there's many other pieces to what you're doing today that can have a hand in economic development in your community. And this plan seeks to engage that and further represent that. And then finally, what's important is you have a plan, you have a process, what is the way that you're going to check that is going to be contributing at a time? And that's where you have here this implementation, implementation plan matrix. You think of the formula for any success is the who, what, when, where, why, how, and how much. Really, what this was saying is, is here's our goals, here's our policies, objective actions, et cetera, and here's those departments within our organization that are contribute to that. And it may not just be one department, but maybe all departments in some cases where you as a, as a city want to engage in all those components of your, of your staff to contribute to economic development. So with that, I think that's a, our short presentation, but what, what I do want to say is that the effort that began in early 2017, again, was a, a long-term effort looking for long-term results. The staff involvement, your involvement, and the community involvement is really what made the plan something that can be usable. I think your trend and what you're showing, the successes that you have, is going to continue with that. You'll have this plan for three years or so, and looking through that in the next year, in the next two years and three years, you'll probably see the results, much like you saw the 214 plan, you'll see the results of those in profound ways. And I would like to applaud the staff and you for being a big contributor to this process, and that concludes the presentation. We happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Any questions?
I'll have just a quick question related to staffing. So we have a plan here, and it didn't take into account the point of the spear is economic development, and that staff and the staffing level. Would you say if you had more staff devoted to more projects is would be, have a multiplying effect to get more economic development in the city?
I'll let staff take a stab at that, because I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I'll, I'll answer, I'll follow up with that.
Let me, I'll let, I'll let Lisa, Ms. Kim, chime in a little bit. We've got, as you can, as you can imagine, between doing the Bike Master Plan and, and the Economic Development Strategic Plan that we've rolled out today, I was going to talk a little bit about it in my comments at the end, but they've been, they've been running around the clock. I've got about 15 projects to update you on that I'm going to send to you in the next couple days. It's going to give you a little snapshot of 15 different things that are going on in the same time all around the city right now. So you'll get a chance to look at those, and I, we, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of things in the hopper, and Councilman Beard's point, yeah, you know, with more staff, you can be out there, you can do more outreach, you can do more recruitment, you can do more retention. There's, there's more you can do, no doubt about it. And, you know, if we can find ways to bring more resources to the table, we're going to do it. We're, we just recently looked at restructuring some of our real estate services functions that will allow Lisa and her staff to be a little more flexible in terms of bringing some resources together. So from my standpoint, yes, we can always, she can, I know she can use more people if we could get more people to her, and we're looking to do that when we can.
I may also add, mayor and council, I want to echo Dave's comments, and that's to acknowledge our Office of Economic Development team. It is a strong team of three led by Greg Blodgett, and Grace Lee this evening did the lion's share of really bringing together the report in conjunction with Dave. So I'm very, very proud of what the staff has been able to accomplish, and, and I think the timeline really speaks to us leveraging technology and looking forward to innovation and really taking advantage of some of the federal and state resources available to us to implement some of our economic development goals. So to echo city manager's styles, yes, I would certainly would like additional staffing, but we have a strong Office of Economic Development team here, and we'll continue to implement the projects outlined in our strategy going forward. So thank you very much.
And if I can just say, if you, if you read the plan, the different strategies and actions speak a lot to that, is innovation, how we can best use our resources most effectively. So looking at parlaying the opportunities and expertise of your staff, looking at technology, there's a number of things in the slide, we show the timeline, that are reflective of exactly that.
Great. Thank you guys very much. Any other comments, questions? If not, there's no action on that item, correct? Just receive and file. We'll go to matters from council members. Mayor Proton, Chris Beard, anything?
I want, I want, I still don't smile enough at these council meetings, and the only time I do is when I mention my beautiful wife, and she just had a birthday this last Sunday, so I want to wish a belated birthday to the love of my life, Cheryl Beard. That was it. Thank you. Smiling.
And Chris, it looks like you have a birthday here too, also. So happy birthday. So you guys are like, right, boom, we can do it at one dinner. Anyway, congratulations on that. A couple of quick things, my last push for the Women's Civic Club of Garden Grove, they're sponsoring a Christmas boutique, and it's this Saturday. If you're around, come in, come out. They, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on the corner of Gilbert and Chapman at the women's club, they're going to have food. They've got a lot of, a lot of vendors that came there that are just individual, small business people that had made things with their own hands for Christmas, and anything you could do to support them would help. If you need something for Christmas, go there. And they also have a rummage sale that the women's club puts on in another room. If you're a kind of a garage sale-type person, you might want to go by there too, because they have that going on at the same time. A couple of things, again, wanted to recognize Craig Durfee on his work on the bike paths and on all of that he's done, just wanted to mention him there. Some of the things that were always said in oral communications about what are we doing, you know, we've done a huge amount in the last couple of years that maybe people aren't aware of, but things like in citywide, you know, first of all, with the budget, we've, we've cut the departments 5% across the board, but we're still maintaining the services and the same quality of service that we did to begin with. We truly support our fire and police. We've added employees in both of those sectors, even though cutting the administrative staff, we've, we've kept hiring in police. Some of the things we've done citywide as far as projects, you've got Brookhurst Places, broken ground and completed, there's, there's new residences there for people. We've moved a Kia dealership, we were able to retain them in the city of Garden Grove. The Galleria Project has moved on, and now we have a possible vision of something happening there with this, the Rusty Skeleton. Wesley Village, we broke ground, built, and opened a affordable housing of a 47-unit, affordable housing units with 31 working families that couldn't, they got assistance to move in this beautiful new facility and provide for their family and live in a, in a nice area. There's 16 senior units there too of retired affordable housing for seniors. This is just to mention a few things. We've got hotel projects still moving forward. We've, we broke ground and built the first new fire station in 47 years. This council voted for that. It was broken ground, and we just cut the ribbon this afternoon on a new fire station. Things are happening, steel craft, again, hotel projects, bus benches, we got all new bus benches in the city of Garden Grove. I know there was a huge debate on green and blue, but we got that settled. And what I like to point out is we relieved a little bit of work from our Public Works, and actually, it's a, it's a public-private partnership where we get, actually, we get money back on advertising revenue, and it gives our local businesses an opportunity to advertise on a bus bench that they may have a business that somebody gets on that bus or drives by and sees and can go to that local business. So it's, it's an inexpensive way to advertise. And I could go on and on, just, these are just some of the things I wrote down when some of the speakers are coming here, hey, what are you doing? Now, we're doing all this, and the, the end item there, economic development, is what we're focused on to keep the engine running. But the reason I bring this whole lot, this whole issue up is, even with everything we're doing and the continued economic development that we have, we come with a shortfall, right? So that's why things are asked of people, you know, why am I asked to do this or that, or vote for a measure or not vote for a measure? I'm not going to tell anybody how to vote, but please get the right information on what you're, what you're voting on. Do the math for yourself on what it would cost your family on, on a one-cent tax. You know, just be honest with people, and we'll dialogue with you on that. Anyway, just wanted to make sure I didn't leave anything out. Real quick, on, on same thing, economic development, just to, in District Two alone, in the last less than two years, we've opened a new, we've got the Gold's Gym, we've got a brand-new beautiful Smart and Final over there. Over at the Regal Theater, we did a major remodel. We opened a Chipotle, a Panda Express, a Blaze Pizza, an Aldi. You know, it goes on and on. We go to ribbon cuttings, all of us, in all our districts every week. So things are happening and shaking, and we're doing the best we can to improve this quality of life here in Garden Grove for all of us. So anything we can do, the old Vons Building has been sold and has a new company that you are leasing and have a plan to move forward with that. So things are happening. Keep positive, get the right information. We're in a world that we, all this misinformation, get the information direct from the horse's mouth, and, and let's continue to move forward. So that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you. To Hoven.
Thank you, John. You have been updating all the projects. That's for all of us.
I'm sure you guys have stuff in your areas too.
But anyway, happy birthday to Mayor Proton, Chris Beard, and best wishes.
Come on.
First, I'll say happy birthday to Mama and Papa Beard. And John, you and I were frequently on the same wavelength. I swear to you, Scott's already giving me the look like, Kim, what's going on here? But you kind of led the way, and I'm going to segue into a different direction, and I'm going to be a little bit more specific. First and foremost, Measure O. You know, when we talk about measures in the past, like for instance, the one in 2000, I was in fourth or fifth grade, right? Now I sit on this dais and I represent one district, but also the whole city. And one thing to keep in mind is, I mean, I keep saying this as a joke, and I don't really mean it as a joke, but I feel like the ex-boyfriend, or the new boyfriend paying for the sins of the ex-boyfriend. I have nothing but the utmost confidence in our staff, in our, my colleagues, to ensure that whatever gets passed, we will be responsible on all accounts on how we move forward. We're a new team, we've been doing, John just listed, I mean, Councilmember O'Neil, listed a large list of all the things that we've accomplished. Bottom line is, the city has exhausted all of its options. We, as mentioned, we've cut budgets for all departments, and yet we're asking them to do more. We've cut Lisa Kim's budget, and yet we're asking her to save us financially by doing all these projects to bring us in revenue, yet we cut her staff or her, her time, whatever it is. And, and if we get more police officers, where are we going to put them? Right? These, these are critical needs that need to be addressed, and we are running out of options. We've done the most that we can, and I am very fearful as to if this measure doesn't pass, what we will have to do. And along those lines, as you mentioned, you know, residents out there, educate yourself, do your research, pros and cons on all, all accounts. I, for instance, spend anywhere between 46 to 40, 48% of my income a month on my rent, just my rent. That doesn't take account my, paying my school loans, paying my car, groceries, my pet, you know, medical bills, whatever the case may be, all those added in, that's not even factored into that percentage point. But yet, things like SB1, which is a gas tax, I have a list here. Garden Grove receives $3.9 million from that, and with that, we were able to accomplish a couple of projects, rehabilitation projects, such as on Chapman from Brookhurst to Nelson. There's still work that needs to be completed, but it's almost there. We have Westminster Avenue from Harbor to Buena, that's projected to be done next month. We have Euclid from Patricia to Catella, which is expected to be done in spring of 2019. Brookhurst from Lamson to Chapman, spring 2019. The Larson Avenue from Brookhurst to Bowen, spring 2019. The La Bonita Storm Drain Improvement, and that's expected to be done in March or April of 2019, and the Garden Grove Boulevard Storm Drain TBD. These are all projects that have been funded partially by SB1 dollars, and if that Proposition 6 passes, we will lose out on some of that money to do that. And we talk a lot about, about fire and police, and obviously, that's why we've put Measure O on the ballot. But we also have the unsung heroes of Public Works who are out there fixing potholes in sewers, doing work that obviously none of us want to do. And so we have to think about that. And we are all living together, this is one big family that we keep talking about, one community. What's our contribution to that? I get it, I don't want to get taxed anymore either, but at the end of the day, what part of, do I bring, what part am I contributing to the pot that goes to all the things that I use? How many times do I drive down Chapman, Lamson, Harbor? How many times do I, not that I call 911 a lot, but if I did, how many times do I do that? How many times are the fire department coming out? You know, all the things that we use, how much are we using of that or not, and what are we contributing back? To understand, you have to understand how your tax dollars are being put to use. It goes to the state, and the state divvies that up, sometimes just to the county, and then the county parcels that out even further, and our share isn't significant enough to do what we need to do. We can't continue to ask, ask staff to do more, to do better, while not giving them anything in return. So really, take the time, go over your ballot measures, do your homework, check candidates out. This is not about party politics anymore, it's really about issue politics. Find what you care about, look into it, do your research, do your due diligence, and make sure you're electing not only people, but putting forward measures that are going to benefit you, your family, your community, your city, because that's, that, that's not exclusive. It's all-inclusive of one. You are part of all of those different buckets, and what you put in is what you're going to get back.
Right. Couple of things. One, I just wanted to start by saying what a great ground, or a grand opening that was to the new Fire Station 6. Beautiful station, community center, Beautiful station, community center, and that playground equipment, oh my goodness, it's darling. So I know how much fun that's going to be with schools across the street and a neighborhood surrounding that fire department and that entire area, and all the kids that play baseball on that field there at West Haven Park, they're all going to really benefit, I think, from that and take comfort and really appreciate having that fire station there. So that was great today. And I also wanted to make mention of some comments during oral communication. Aaron Downs, I believe his name was, he was speaking on behalf of the marching band for Garden Grove High School. I would just appreciate it if staff could maybe follow up or reach out. I don't remember if he said he had been to, let's say, a Board of Trustees meeting with the school district or not. I don't know if that's an avenue he needs to take or had taken, but just kind of liked some follow-up to see what we can do to help mitigate that and get some more information on it. And the Dodgers are down, people. It's 5-3. This is not good. I lead you with that. Thank you. And happy birthday, Councilmember Beard.
Well, Mayor Jones may ask you for the same amount of time that Councilman O'Neill and Councilwoman Kim Wynn have had, because I feel that I need to, you know, counter their argument. I'm just kidding.
I'm like, oh, here we go.
Come on, it's such a very long statement that you guys put us through. But anyway, just want to, okay.
I'll match up some of your long ones, Scott.
All right, okay. I give my time for my colleagues, so I just want to say happy birthday to my friends, Chris Beard. And we'll have the cake soon, I guess.
Do we have cake?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And happy birthday, four-years-old, it's a four candle.
Yeah.
That's a dog candle. Yeah, happy birthday, Cheryl and Chris. And also, just want to iterate, thanks Craig Durfee for all your passion and all your research and all your hard work in the realm of active transportation. Appreciate it. Yeah. Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yeah, we do pay attention sometimes, and we have a very special birthday cake for Mr. Beard, so everybody will get to go in there and check it out for yourself, see if you agree with his taste in birthday cakes. Just to play off on some of the things Councilman O'Neill said, you know, he rattled off a whole bunch of things that came to his mind. Just as I was looking at a couple of things I got just recently, and I'll be giving you all more information about this, but just the West Garden Grove Theater project went to the Planning Commission last week, and that's, you know, I think a transformation is germinating there that I think can be really important. The BN Group, I think, is the hotel on Harbor, is going to the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks. We're doing transformational things with code enforcement and city planning right now, just business processes, how we do things, how we make it easier. It was mentioned, the former Vons Pavilion is in the beginning stages, I think of something good happening there. The Nova Restaurant, connected to the Hyatt, is going to be a terrific, beautiful restaurant to our city. I think that should open in January. Of course, Mr. Mayor, all the work that the staff are doing with Willowick, more to come on all of that. And then, of course, Garden Brook Senior Housing, the Kia dealership that's going to be opening up, Five Below Retailer that's coming to the promenade that you'll be hearing more about, our outdoor dining regulations on Main Street, and it just goes on and on. And so I can't, it amazes me, the work that Lisa Kim and all the staff in the Community and Economic Development Department are doing. It's truly phenomenal, so they're doing great work, and I appreciate all of their efforts. Just a couple of other quick things. We spoke briefly about Public Works. If you haven't driven Chapman in a couple of days, Chapman Avenue is pretty much completely rehabilitated and finished from Euclid to Brookhurst. It's all striped now, it's beautiful, it's a beautiful stretch of our road that's been done, so kudos to Bill Murray and all the folks in Public Works for working with the contractor and making that all happen, a great little project. And the final thing I want to just say, as mentioned here a little bit, but for any of the residents in the community that weren't able to come to our ribbon cutting for Fire Station 6 in West Haven Park on West Avenue, it was, you know, kind of in my mind, really kind of a historic event for our city. We haven't built a new fire station in 47 years. We had both of our United States congressmen there to support the project, you know, our county supervisors were there. So it was really a big deal, and again, just compliments to Fire Chief Schultz and Bill Murray and the architects and everybody that worked together on that project. They brought the project in on schedule, on budget, on time, and so, you know, a lot of credit really goes out to them. And we should also mention, I really thought it was a great project because not only did we find the space for the fire station, but we created value for the community outside of just fire services, because as you all got to see and residents will get to go, there's a beautiful new play park that Councilmember Koppenstein mentioned for the kids, and there's a brand-new community facility building for the community to use for events and picnics and other things. So it was really a tremendous win-win for everybody. So I just want to thank all of our staff, they're working really hard for you, and we look forward to keep the momentum going. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
With that, we're going to adjourn to a closed session item. Do we anticipate any reporting out?
Yeah, we, well, depends on what you, actions you take in closed session, but I do have to put on the record that council will meet in closed session with outside counsel to consider the claim by the county for uncollected animal care fees. And as in past situations, I need to recuse myself, because my firm does represent the county in some litigation matters, and also Mayor Proten, Chris Beard, works for the same department involved in this item for the county, so he will also be recusing. And we'll wait, we'll check the cake out for you ahead of time.